I'll call the meeting to order. Will you please stand for the presidential allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whose feet justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. First on our agenda, we'll do the solid waste budget. Thor, I know you're on that solid waste board. Do you have any comments on the budget?
Is this, are we in the public hearing right now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll call the public hearing on the solid waste budget to order. Okay. Any questions or comments since you serve on that board?
Obviously, we're facing the challenge down there with, I can do. Okay, the rates that they're been being charged and that have been in charge in the past or the changes that made the past. Madeline, would you call, please?
Yep.
And I'm going to let Madeline be a little bit more into that because she's been doing the financial end of it and let her speak on that.
Good morning, everyone. I am Madeline St. Bartle. I am the clerk treasurer of the town and sheriff of Assau, but I also serve as the treasurer of the solid waste board. So with our budgets, we have been seeing significant deficits within our budget over the past couple of years. And we are actually going to be seeking a rate increase because of these deficits. As we all know, everything keeps going up and up and up. Our grades, however, have not been going up to meet the inflation rate. And, and yeah, so we will be doing a rate increase, or hopefully, we will be doing a rate increase next year. We have, I usually budget very liberally with numbers just because we don't really know what's going to happen in the future and then conservatively with revenues. So with this, there's basically a 5% increase throughout the budget for 2024 for solid waste. We already know that our user rates are, curb side recycling rates will be going up because GFL, our provider, has given us notice that they have not been charging us correctly for the past several years, and they will be going up. Karen, do you know how much?
Yeah, they are going up to roughly $2 to almost $4.
Yes.
I just got the email yesterday.
So they will be doubling what they are charging us for pickup. So, so that is also another issue that we are having with user rates. I would be happy to answer any questions that you guys have about budgets.
I have a question.
Yes.
How do you get them to pick up your recyclables? I'm getting tired of calling.
I understand. We are, we've been dealing, we've been battling with that as a solid waste board for the past year or so. They have gotten better. I know Teresa has been taking care of a lot of that with missed pickups and everything and trying to work with them on picking up more regularly.
Well, they need to, because I'm getting a lot of people complaining about it, that they have to keep calling them and then they, they may be out in a week or they may be out in two weeks to get it.
Yeah, I understand. I understand your frustrations.
Dogs get in it.
We, we're actually going to be putting this out bid early next year as well for our new provider, so.
Now, GFL hadn't been on that long, have they?
No, they bought out Woodland County Recycling about a year ago.
The, as I looked at over this, I was wondering on page two, it's got administration, 35,000. I'm just curious what that might be.
That is for the county. We actually pay the county to bill on, to put our user rates onto tax bills.
Okay. And those user rates right now are how much?
$53 a year.
And you're anticipating roughly?
It was 70 or 75. Thor, do you remember?
Well, remember, I wasn't at that last meeting. You were talking about.
Yeah, I wasn't at that last meeting either, so.
You talked about a three-tier vote.
It was around $62 a year, when we did the phase and Thor came up with it a second year ago to 70, so it was such a large jump that.
So you're looking at $6 a month? And is, is this, how hard does the state monitor this program? Because when it started years ago, you know, we had a, we had a goal of everybody's position was mandated by the House Bill 1240.
Right.
Do they pay much attention to it now?
We haven't had an audit since 2018. I anticipate an audit since there has been a change in director though, in the upcoming months. In fact, I've been told by State Department accounts that they will be doing an audit within the upcoming months.
But as far as.
With State Department accounts, you know, they.
But they don't, they don't monitor the program.
No.
They just, they're just checking the books. But does state have much input now with?
Not that I've seen.
Goals or anything? I mean.
In 2017, the state did a way of mandating on programs.
So, because we used to, our goal was 55% than recyclable, so, okay, just curious.
Yeah, I haven't been on, I've been on the board for about a year and a half, so that was before my time.
And I would share with you, we still have the stipulations, if this is important or not to you, we still have the stipulations in our contract that the recycled items that are picked up are to be recycled. And we've had some problems with GFL on when they were learning the area and they were cross, crossing routes with different trucks. And a lot of the recycling, I don't want to say a lot, there was a portion of the recycling that was being put into landfills. And we did send them notice about that to make sure that they were following the contract. But that's always been very important to us all forward, and I think as a community that are recyclable or being recycled, it's just not another trash pickup. That is being monitored and watched.
Good. Any other questions?
On the third page, what's the HHW program?
Household Hazardous Waste.
Okay. You have a day or two a year for that where you get rid of, hard to, hard to get rid of paints.
Paints every day. Paints are every day, but yeah.
Chemicals?
Yes.
Stuff like that.
Yeah, we take, or actually, they take that basically all year round.
Good. Any other questions? Public? During, during that, I'll close the public meeting.
Thank you, guys.
And what's your pleasure on their budget?
Do you have a motion for approval? Some move.
I have a motion by John. Is there a second?
Yes.
Is that you, Thor?
Yes.
Yes, second by Thor to approve the solid waste budget for 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Now, we'll go into a public hearing on the county's budget. And I'll call that to open now. Any questions from the board or public about the budget?
No, but I'd like to make a motion that we, that we give 3% raise to all the government employees full-time and also elected officials. And in my motion, I would like it paid out of ARPA money.
I'll second that.
Well, if we're in the public hearing, I don't think motions.
No.
That's correct. You're right.
Are proper at this point, and I think, I think that we should probably go back out of the public hearing and finalize our budget by adding our salaries and stuff into it like you just started and then go back to the public hearing once all the numbers are set, so then people can address questions that they have about that budget. Just my.
I'll retract. You're correct.
Okay, well, we'll step out of the public hearing and we'll discuss the budget.
Now, you want me to repeat that, Thor?
No.
You can just do it like title only. You can just say, I'll submit my motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Kim.
I'll let you know it wasn't advertised that way.
No, it was not advertised that way. It's advertised at 5%.
It was not anything in the ARPA, so we looked at, it was all in each individual budget.
So what you're saying is we waited too long? Just for the funding of it.
Right, because as is, you'll see each individual line item has their, where the, most of them are county gen, but some in the later on and some of the grants and health department, they're all set as per your book showed where they were being paid from.
So any? Well, but your comment, Tiffany, was we have a shortfall. We could possibly come out of our funds, but that would be a shortfall, shortfall for the whole budget. Correct?
For the, that's just county gen.
Right.
So not out of the whole budget. Each one separate.
So in a 5% increase, you're projecting $135,000 shortfall? And that's not taking into account any unencumbered funds that would still be in countywide budgets that will come back to county general, which is traditionally how much?
46%.
46%, which would more than cover the 135,000. So we're not really, even if we would go to 5%, we're not, we're operating at the thousand budget.
That's assuming as well.
So we have a motion and a second. That correct, Tom? You seconded it.
Correct.
That we do a 3% increase? Discussion?
And that was out of the ARPA.
Are you?
Well, we'll take it out since, oh, restrict or remark that we take it out. Take that remark about being paid out, out of there.
So it'll be out of county general.
Right.
Discussion?
Solid Waste's got 6%. We didn't advertise it 6% for solid waste.
We don't do that. They do.
They got 6%.
Yeah, they're short of money.
But they're, they're an entity. So. Any more discussion on the 3%? Motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and state my opinions again. I don't think that we're being, I don't think we're staying up with the cost of living. I have never been one to probably go on the high end of raises, but I don't think that a 5%, even though it appears to be out of the norm for what we have done in the past, is on the high end with what inflation is doing to all the employees' budgets right now. What we're paying for bread and gas and everything else. When we can present a balanced budget and still give a 5% increase, I think we're being negligent in showing that we support our most valuable resource, which is our employees. I don't think that we're showing that. So I will not vote for a 3% increase. I think it should be 5%. I also do not agree that we vote ourselves a raise. We are, as a council, we are on the higher end of most everybody, not only in our area, but also in our size across the state of Indiana with how we're being compensated now. So I'm against us voting ourselves a raise. I am in favor of our commissioners receiving the same raise as other county employees, but I think we need to be a 5% for the entire.
I'll agree with Thor. I think 5% is the least we can do.
I also.
I, I disagree with the statement for balanced in the budget. We are not balanced in the budget. This is only going to be worse next year because this is going to roll over next year and we're going to have to do another increase next year. We are not in budget. That needs to be restated. Because you're using funds that I think will be there. We don't know what's going to happen between now and the end of the year. It may not be there. From the past, the way things are done, it most likely will be there, but your statement saying we are in budget is incorrect because we are not in budget. We are out of budget. And that's what my problem is. I don't agree with the 5% rate increase due to that fact, but I would go for four, like I stated at our budget hearing. And I have to agree with Thor. I don't think, I don't think the council or the commissioners should have a rate increase because we both are over percentage-wise due to likable size counties. That's how I feel.
I, when I say a balanced budget, you're right. I'm assuming that there's going to be $135,000 that's going to come back in from unencumbered funds that are already allocated to every department's budget this year. So Tiffany, if you could, it might be a hard question for you, but how much as a percentage generally comes back?
Usually 4% to 6%.
Which would be?
Anywhere from 180 to 350,000.
Okay, and based on that 135,000, what percent is 135,000 of our total budget?
I'm not sure without looking.
Less than 1%?
Probably 2, 1, 2% would be my guess.
So I guess I'm misspeaking as we look at it right now, but as there, in the last five years, has there ever been money not come back to county, county general? Last 10 years, has money never?
I haven't looked back 10, but I think last year I gave numbers from 2018 on, and there's always been something that comes back.
And so that's where I come up with that statement. I'm not trying to accept.
I understand, it's just the fact that.
You guys, anything to say, Kim or Tom?
I already said.
Okay, I agree with Joan. We, we do not have a balanced budget. We're not even close to balance, balanced budget, and that's my concern because we're just kicking this can down the road. What we're doing is we're taking funds from ARPA and, and from our cash balance to balance our budget. Our cost is a lot higher than our revenue coming in, and we did not fix that. We had a chance to do some things that could have really helped our budget, and we have not done that. And when that happens, then I believe Joan is correct. We're adding to this for next year. And we, we still have to south. If we take the ARPA funds like we plan to do, that's not a reoccurring fund, so those funds are gone. It's, and so we, we still have to figure this budget out at some point, and we have to get tough to do it because we're well short of more, a lot more than 135,000 on this budget because we're using ARPA funds to fund some of our expenses. So we do not have a balanced budget. That's, I'm, I'm for the 3%, and that's strictly why. Because we, we did not do our job on the, on the, on the budget.
Well, I guess that would be part of my point, too. If we haven't done our job, then often we'd be voting ourselves a raise. If the money's not there and we don't have money in the budget, then we shouldn't be getting a raise.
Well, should we give a raise at all then?
Well, I mean, we're responsible for doing it. If we haven't done our job, then we certainly should be giving ourselves a raise. Our employees deserve a raise because it's a cost of living raise. It's not, it's not fair to them not to receive a raise.
Right, but we, we didn't, we didn't south the budget. We didn't at all, so. Any other discussion?
I would still add, too, that, you know, that we have been told that our trend is still trending to where we're on solid ground and that our reserves are in good place, and this year has been labeled as an anomaly and not as a trend. And I think that that's something that we don't know.
What is our Achilles heel? And, and every time Baker Tilly talks to us and talk, goes over our financial report, what is our Achilles heel? Salaries and, and benefits. The last two, three years, that's, that's where we're negative at and so forth, so. And, and I mean, every year, they stress that. So forth, so we do have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion, comments? I'll call for the vote. All in favor of 3% increase, including all elected officials, is that correct, Tim?
Yes.
Tim? Raise your right hand. All those opposed, say yes. Okay, three of them. Four does not pass. Okay, more discussion.
I'll make a motion for a 5% increase in the budget as, that in the budget as we had talked about with commissioners receiving the same increase and council receiving no increase.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Thor, second by Nick, that a 5% increase and everyone except council gets an increase. Is that correct, Thor?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
I'm, I'm still against the 5%. I mean, you look at the budget, we're not there yet. Tiffany did an excellent job trying to, I don't, I'm not going to say it, correct Tiffany, Tiffany trying to get us another 400,000, which would have been perfect, but according to state, we're not at that level yet. So we're just, we get, we get rid of ARPA funds and we're in the red, is the way I look at it. I, I can't. I know things keep going up, but I think you're going to have to adjust your lifestyle a little bit, whether it's right or wrong. I mean, we, we have so much money to work with and we can't go out and make more money and come up with. I know that we might be trending a little behind, but my goodness, I think all our employees are doing pretty good with salary and benefits. So I'm, I'm still not in favor of the thought.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of Thor's motion of 5% and everyone gets a raise except council, raise your right hand. All those opposed, the same. And that's defeated. Okay, still open for discussion.
Well, we've just denied the employees 5%. We don't agree with the 3%, so I'm going to go back to the 4%. No raises for elected officials. Us, not all, not the elected officials being commissioner and council.
So we have a motion.
She's got the point that she's elected official.
I just said, that's not who I meant. I meant commissioners and council.
So you're, you're made a motion of 4%? No raises for commissioners or council? Do I have a second?
During that, that motion does. Make a motion at a 4.5% increase for all employees that haven't been already mandated to us, like probation and so forth, including the commissioners and only excluding the council?
Have a motion from Thor, 4.5%.
I'll second that.
Everyone except council, second by Nick. Discussion? During that, yes, I call for a vote. All those in favor of 4.5% motion with no raise for council, raise your right hand. All those opposed, the same. Back to drawing vote, board.
I'll revise my motion at 4%. Including everyone except for council, our rates. Second.
Have a motion for Thor. A second from Nick, 4%. And no raise for council. Discussion? Yeah?
My problem is commissioners are getting included in the race and the councils are not getting committed, included in the race, but we're both over that threshold on likable counties. That's what's holding me back on that. So I just like to have a moment to sit.
So this is discussion. Are you pondering that? You think we should be included or not included in the race?
I'm not for either getting a raise, so that's what I'm trying to say.
You're not for what now?
I'm not for commissioners or council, and that's due, we just cut down for the employees. The commissioners are over as well as us, not by far, because they're, again, it's coming up to us also. The other counties are coming up. And I think there's one county ahead of the commissioners at this point. I'm not sure. I looked a month ago. I don't remember, but there is closing them again there.
I think what's a 4% increase on the commissioner's salary?
I personally think that we've all worked hard this year and commissioners and council deserve an increase also, if we're, if we're going to do that. Lot of meetings.
Lot of meetings.
Lot of extra work behind the scenes.
It's about 1,200 added on to each.
Also, if you look at the counties that offer commissioners' health insurance, so. I was told that's 85 counties that offer their commissioners' health insurance, so we're saving them there.
And we don't have a control over that. They control themselves.
Right. Health insurance. I'm just saying, as a monetary standpoint, we don't do that, so we're not spending.
Tiffany, what is it worth for 4% for council?
500, a little over 500 or something like that.
About $590. And that's keeping in mind that as of right now, you guys have, the chair makes a thousand more on both commissioners. And that's keeping in mind that as of right now, you guys have the chair makes a thousand more on both commissioner and council. There should be a little more.
Are there, are the commissioners? Raises based off of the commissioners rate and the thousand dollar states of the thousand, or do you give the? Rate increase based on the total amount? Because I think that that statement for being in that position should always be the standard thousand dollars. It shouldn't be affected by percent.
I agree with that.
Yeah, that's been just a thousand more. It's not like a thousand, five hundred or anything like that. Just a thousand.
It's not affected by any rate increase.
Not since we've done before last year, wasn't it?
Was last year or first year, we went back to that?
Can't remember if it was last year or two years ago, two years.
I just think if the commissioners get a raise, the council should get a raise. If the council doesn't get a raise, commissioners don't get one. That's how I feel. We gave the commissioners raises last year and we didn't have a raise last year, which I'm fine with already. But that's just how I feel. I just think we should be together.
And what's your motion right now, Thor? What percent?
It was at five.
That was, that was half hour.
That was way back.
Four percent raise for everyone except for like mandated raises from the state or few people that we're not giving them additional raises. And to include the commissioners, but not to exclude council.
Any further discussion? We do have a motion on the floor.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna lean with Joan. I. I said three all along. I would be willing to go to four, but county, county council and county commissioners both get the raise. That's. What's going through my head right now. And that's what you're saying, correct?
Or not.
Or not, yeah.
But that's not the motion.
That's not the motion. I'm just on discussion. Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just so everybody knows where I'm coming from now. So.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Four percent and no council, right, Thor?
That's correct.
And any other, other state allocated people do not get the raise. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed the same. That does not pass.
Well, I could make another motion, but I think I'm going to defer to Joan because obviously you are the deciding vote here. So why don't you make a motion?
Well, we need to get the budget passed. I'm definitely at the four percent.
So what's holding you back from not making a motion?
What's the role of Thor you can make? I would put you on the spot, but it's contingent, contingent on you. So I don't mean to put the weight on you, but.
I'm gonna go four percent. Raise for employees. Just allowing the ones that state mandated like Thor had presented earlier. And I will raises for council and.
Okay, I have a motion of four percent. Raises for commissioner and council and none for mandated positions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
That was second by Tom. Discussion.
I can't support that. I don't think that we should be taking a raise, especially when we're not giving our employees a raise that we should be giving them. So I appreciate, you know. Where you're coming from, but I can support.
Okay, any other discussion? We do have a motion on the floor. I'll call for the question. All in favor of Jones' motion, four percent, including commissioners, council, and none for the mandated positions. Raise your right hand, all in favor. All those asked for. All those opposed the same. Passes. Okay. What else on the budget?
We have one more other thing, and this was the sheriff's. She's a separate from, from this. Chad, who represents commissioners on the sheriff's budget, on the sheriff's salary?
I'm not really sure what you mean.
Well, George and I, when George was there, we're the ones that worked with the sheriff or his wage. So are we gonna do anything with it or, or? Because that's separate.
Well, there hasn't really been any conversation about that. I didn't have to write that.
I would be in favor for a four percent raise for the sheriff.
I guess, you know, I think it's appropriate if everyone else is getting the raise that, you know. I think it's appropriate to apply it to the sheriff's salary as well.
But I don't have a problem with it. I mean, I don't know how you want to handle that, but.
So who has to okay that? Just your board or the commissioners?
The contract is with the council and commissioners.
But didn't we just pass this with all employees other than those that mandated?
It's, I think, I think in the contract it did state that we would meet, discuss that. So I don't know if you want to do that separately. Or and then come back to it or not. I don't think you got it.
I have to be part of the.
And again, it hasn't, it hasn't been dropped about either. I don't think it's approached me about it. So obviously the budget's not.
We're getting ready to do that right now. So. What are your feelings, Jason? What do you want to be paid? You feel like you're being fairly compensated?
I, I do. I was really hoping like I, in, in my budget, I'd find six percent across the board for our people. So I appreciate you sticking up for the employees because I think we advertised five percent. I really thought five percent would go through. And being advertised, I, with Baker Tilly telling us how we were in our, in the way we were looking, in our future and where our gains were, where our reserves were. They had a good report from what I was told or what I was in a meeting with. I thought the six percent that I put in was fair because we're trying to make up for years past. I've been here fifteen, fourteen, fifteen years ago. We went five years to zero. So I know what that's like. So for me to be up here standing here on soapbox saying that, I've been there. So moving forward, honestly, I'd rather it that. I wish five percent would have went through. I appreciate what Nick and Thor were doing and trying to stand up for not, for every employee across the board. I don't know. For me to come up here and stand here, it's really uncomfortable to stand here and talk about somebody's salary. But I would like to know what that, what that four percent would be, honestly. And I wish it could have an effect on five percent for the rest of employees. Because I would be, I would entertain taking less if it would mean a difference if somebody else gave more.
It'd be hard to divide it up, you know, four percent raise is gonna be about what, forty-two, forty-three?
Like you talk about council not getting a raise, I would be in that same position if it benefits somebody else. So. The contract says we're gonna have discussions. I think, I know George was there. It was kind of mixed of who was taking over for George. He left. But I know if you want to have a meeting with this, Kim, but what's the four percent? I'm assuming the four percent is done and over with, right?
Yes. And I could have went with the five percent if we'd had a real balance, but we didn't.
Did you want to know four percent of yours?
Yeah.
Would be forty-four hundred.
Ross Way.
Well, it's hundred ten. No.
Do you want to have a discussion that privately in here or not? Or do you want to get it done?
Yes, but we need to get this done, so.
I mean, it's.
Chad, what do you?
It sounds like the sheriff is comfortable with four percent. I'm comfortable with four percent. So I would recommend four percent increase for the sheriff.
I have no, yeah, it's fine.
Across the board.
You have to have a separate motion for that. By the way, the contract breach will probably do need a separate motion.
Do you have to amend the contract?
No, I think it just says it's negotiated every year.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just, I didn't know if we were gonna have a meeting or not.
Well, welcome to the meeting. I, I apologize to you because it got dropped on my lap when George left. So I'm at fault. You and I didn't sit down and give you a dollar raise and. But. That's my fault. We need, I make a motion that we give the sheriff a four percent raise.
Have a motion by Kim, a second by Nick that we also include the sheriff in the four percent increase raise. Discussion. Call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed unanimous. Thank you, Jason. Okay, now we'll go into public hearing unless we, do we have anything else on the county budget?
Tiffany, has that completely set the budget?
Um, the only other thing that was in question. Her conversations with Baker Tilly was in there, you'll notice. The possibility of renewing the bond, which it sounds like that's kind of gone by the wayside. So you will see. We're about four lines down the debt service that says budget estimate five hundred and ten thousand. That will be removed if it doesn't get moved in. Everything else will be exactly the same.
We need that for this year's payment.
No, 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 that is completely separate. If you look farther down, lease rental is for this building, your last payment. So no, that is not needed for.
Isn't that one?
No, they would be too separate.
So if I'm not renewing that bond, say when I have an extra five hundred and ten thousand.
Um, I don't believe that's the way that works. It's because it's based on the tax rate. So the rate would have changed if we would have kept that five hundred and ten. But we won't be keeping it. They would have been taxed more to get that five hundred and ten thousand.
Okay, so it's not.
So it's not. Right, that'll be just null and void, just not.
No raise taxes or.
Correct.
Let's give them the taxpayers.
So that's the only other thing that I need clarification on.
Unless we decide by the end of the year to do that bond. Correct?
Well, it would have to be decided with this. Well, it's in there, but. If we're not doing it, I need to remove it as adopted.
Let's. I guess it's my understanding that we don't have the authority to renew a bond. That's a commissioner issue.
Correct.
So. It needs to be taken out.
So everything else will remain the same minus the one percent decrease, which I'll bring you those numbers two weeks before your next meeting. We'll get everything updated.
Is there anything else on the, the budget? Want to, want to take that out? Is that what we want to do? Baker Tilly had Tiffany put that back in. So just in case we wanted to do a bond by the end of the year. And they said it could be.
And we don't do anything in that line for our last payment.
If you look two down from that where it says lease rental payment, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, that is a separate. No, 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 that's separate. You'll just be removing that five hundred and ten. And we're leaving the lease rental payment to make that final payment in February.
So is that what you want to do? Take that out?
We don't have a choice.
Right.
Plus the commissioners, they're all gonna tell us right now if they're gonna renew it.
Okay. I guess start that out. Okay, anything else on the budget? And we'll go into public. Hearing. During none, I'll close the discussion and go, we'll go into public hearing on our budget. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. Now we need to approve the budget.
Motion to approve the budget with the changes that have been made today. My only question would be, has there been any additions, pressures? Anything that's been done to the budget outside of what we've already been presented and talked about and have approved as a group? Other than the changes that were made today, which I come into my motion to include those changes.
Second, those motions. Second by John, Thor's motion. Any further discussion? I, I do want to say that our discussion is healthy. You know, that's, that's what we're supposed to do. We have questions and that. So I do appreciate everyone's comments and time. And I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the two thousand twenty-four budget, raise your right hand. All those opposed the same. Thank you. Okay.
I would just like to add, if I could please, that I'm looking to approve the budget just because it's for good and whole. I believe in the budget. I'm still not happy with the fact that we put ourselves a raise. If I can leave anything out of that, it's your issue. But I'm not ready to not vote for the budget as a whole piece of work because that might hurt.
Okay. Okay, next. Sand Strategies broadband update.
Morning. Thanks for taking the time for us to provide an update for you guys on our broadband deployment efforts. Zach Stan, president of Sand Strategies, I think most of you have, I've met or got who wish to meet. If not, nice meeting you guys this morning.
You guys, you have to see us in action.
Yeah. I'm based out of Fort Wayne, so I live actually just about twenty minutes away from here. I think you can hit at five. So really just kind of want to highlight, like I said, our broadband deployment efforts. As many of you guys aware, I mean, broadband is a critical part of our everyday life. It's how we, you know, educate our students now after post-COVID. It's how we provide, you know, telehealth, it's how our farmers, you know, operate their combines. It's just critical to everyday life. And because of this, the state federal government has made significant investments towards broadband over the past couple of years. ArdoF has been a, ran around for several years. What private providers go after those? And the B programs, the new program that the local government's gonna get a little bit of buy-in. So that's, it's eight hundred and sixty million dollars that's coming just. So that's a, it's eight hundred and sixty-eight million dollars that's coming just to the state of Indiana for broadband. And then the state government, also the ICP program. I know maybe a couple of commissioners, they've been great helping me get the memo out for the ICP program. That allows individual homeowners and businesses to apply for these grants. And then providers will bid on those individual addresses. So it's a great program, we try to push out as much as we can. And then the next level connections program, specifically NLC round four, that's a bucket of dollars we plan to go out through this fall. I'm working with in partnership with providers. Next slide. So kind of our first approach as we first got hired and got to engage with you guys. It's for really education awareness around broadband. You know, receiving the education, the technologies, most folks when they hear broadband, they just think about if they're connected or not in their home or not. But then technology, there's, you know, fixed wireless or satellite, there's fiber, there's always different technologies out there. So making sure that the public is aware of those and as well as all the public and private programs that are out there from. Some of the ones I just talked about to actually, you know. Programs where they can actually, for the end user to reduce the cost of broadband. So there's ACP program is where, say if your internet's a hundred bucks a month, you're free and reduced lunch. Student, you can get significant discount on the service to your home. And really a lot of the work that comes out of the broadband task force that we established. From there, we developed a plan and strategy and how we identify funding sources, kind of enhancing local processes. And the data collection is also a huge part of the task force that we've been, you know, a lot of you probably have seen the speed test that's been out there that we've been trying to promote. And collect data on those underserved and unserved areas in the county. As well as relationship building with providers, making sure that, you know, we're welcoming to, to Whitley County. I'd love to see their private investment come here. And also I call this beyond the build, so I think it's great if we build the infrastructure, but we also want to make sure that people are utilizing infrastructure, right? There's really no point building off this infrastructure, folks actually aren't going to receive the service. And then securing broadband investment for economic growth. So really fostering those public private partnerships between the provider and the government. I'll kind of get some of these more details we go through, but enhancing good government actions. Looking for incentives that are, you know, the state federal level to get these providers kind of to encourage them to come make an investment here. And then a big part of our job too is making sure that we're stretching those public dollars. And you guys obviously debating your guys' budget today, so you know, what's the best way we can stretch that public dollar? And make sure there's, there's, it's properly applied without any government waste. And I've got to make up the task force, it's kind of originally was organized between Mr. Bay Singer, Nick Burr, and Dale, our EDC president. The team kind of consists of economic development folks, business groups, selected officials and internet service providers. Having all those people at the table to have a good discussion of what are need hours in the county. And as I kind of highlighted earlier, making sure all those industries are represented from ag, healthcare, education, e-commerce and everything in between. A lot of you guys probably have seen some of this as we've kind of done some awareness, but the ICP program, it's a program I highlighted earlier. Where individual residents and business can apply, so we try to promote that program as much as we can. A big part of the challenge is, is really identifying those, those underserved and underserved areas. So that's why we have a map challenge process. So your home says it has adequate internet on, you know, as far as like on the federal website. My attempt isn't always accurate, and so what we ask folks to do is to challenge those maps to prove whether or not that's the case. And also taking that speed test. If you could, if you want to, on the next slide. Actually go back one, sorry. The, for the county EDC broadband landing page.
Is that one you opened already?
Yep. So what we've tried to do is create a one-stop shop when it comes to all the education awareness and programs that are out there. So in partnership with Dale, we created the broadband task force website. This has all the state and federal programs that you can leverage as well as taking that speed test. To the. And the next slide. So broadband like page, like I said, it really created that to increase transparency. I said one, real one-stop shop for broadband resources. And then if you want to go to the next slide. So understanding the need. Whitley County, about eight point five percent of the county is unserved. That means that's being speeds that are under twenty-five over three. And then about fifty-seven point two percent is underserved. So as you can see there, and there's a significant part of the county that's either unserved or totally, either totally unserved or totally underserved. With only about thirty-four point three percent of the county being served. Do you want to click on the Whitley County need? So kind of give you guys a picture of Whitley County where some of the pockets are. You can see there in the pink area, that's the definitely unserved areas. And as you move towards the blue and the gray, those are areas of the county that is, that is served. So as you can see here, from a lot of the data that we've collected, there's, there's definitely a, a need for some more investment to be made in the county. To make sure we're filling those, those pockets and making sure we're getting folks connected up there. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to stop me too. And then we go back to the. And some of the kind of good government actions we've kind of put in place. As I talked about earlier too, stretching that public dollar as much as we can if there, the county does look to make an investment. The part of our work is making sure there's not prohibiting overbuilding, so making sure we're not using public dollars to compete with private sector dollars. And as well ensure that there's proper infrastructure that's being put in place. There's a scenario down in southern Indiana recently that might, it's made statewide news on where the provider was hanging fiber to actual trees. As you probably would guess that it's not a proper way to hire, to hang fiber infrastructure. So making sure that, you know, stuff is, the providers are properly hanging this infrastructure out throughout the county. Some other things we worked on too is book permitting. So when a writer comes to make an investment in the county, you know, instead of doing all these one-off permits, we want to try to internally make sure our processes are, are well updated. So we could kind of make it easier for their job, so it makes them more willing to make that investment there. As well as creating a single point of contact with the highway department's office and then also myself. So if there is any issue with permitting or there's any issues they're out about, they can communicate to us and we can help get that problem resolved. As well as joint trenching, making sure any new development that's going on in the county that we're treating broadband, no different than water, sewer, gas, electricity. And you know, when that electric co-op is coming in to, you know, put in, put in electric lines in the ground, making sure we're doing fiber as well. It's kind of making, being, being as far on the front end, we're tearing up the person's yard multiple times and putting out all that in places on the front end. Then also too, some good kind of media coverage on, if you guys saw the great, great of Fort Wayne, Business Weekly. We were highlighted in there just for, so the work that we've been, been doing here in the county to, to really kind of move the needle on our broadband deployment efforts. Big part of it is also our engagement with providers. From the work I've done over the past five, 10 years, we, we have relationships with about thirty-plus providers. That's from Fortune five hundred companies to locally owned ISPs here in the state of Indiana. Through this, we have, really have three main providers that are really showing interest in, in the rural parts of Whitley County. And so with those providers, we're looking to collaborating on where, what are some public, private, public, private, sorry, public partnership opportunities we can, we can have with those guys to just burn that investment here. Next slide. One of these opportunities is NLC round four. I think originally when I talked to you guys when I first got hired. We've had a lot of success with this in other counties. NLC round four in Allen County, we were just successful in securing about twenty-six million dollars for total investment working with four providers. So that's the same thing we want to do here in Whitley County. So that's a state, state grant that allows states to kind of help subsidize these providers to go into those unserved and underserved areas. And then also there's an opportunity to be really successful this one, if the county is willing to put in a small match. It doesn't always have to be a direct match. This guy can be informed from the good government actions we've put in place, even waiving permitting fees. Sometimes these providers' overall project costs, sometimes ten to twenty percent of their overall project can be wrapped up in permitting fees. So, so it's an opportunity, we can, you know, alleviate some of that, so they, we can get them to pick up more addresses there. Out of this NLC grant. There's a, there's a total of six thousand four hundred and ten addresses that are eligible, eligible just for Whitley County. And then you can go to the next slide. And so kind of the timeline process, we plan to work with you guys. We've already began, Oprah added an additional process this year. We're kind of getting some more buy-in from the county where we're actually able to submit addresses to the state to make them eligible. So we've been working with providers here and Whitley County that are interested to kind of clean up some of those lists. And then add any additional addresses that, you know, claim that they're served, but they're not, that we can add to make sure we get them served and that they have adequate. Broadband there. As far as the next step is really kind of securing, kind of going further down the right line with these, these providers and securing proposals for them. And, you know, kind of seeing based on those six thousand plus addresses, what makes the most sense for you guys to serve and what the total project cost be? And, you know, what is the end cost to the consumer, kind of putting that together, so we can kind of go through this application process with the, these providers. From there, there's a, a provider challenge process. So there's a little competition here between the providers where they can kind of call each other out, whether they're serving these locations or not serving those locations. So that's, that's great for us that, that's in place. And then as we kind of move into the fall, one thing I kind of want to talk to you guys about today, or put on your radar at least, is to be really successful with these, with these grants, securing the investment. It's, it's, it's wrong encouraged if the county is willing to put in some type of contribution. In other counties, we, my job is to make sure you were putting as much private dollars in first rather than the, the public sector dollars. And most times with the twenty-seven million dollar, twenty-six, twenty-seven million dollar project we got done, the county put only less than nine percent of, of that investment in there. The majority of that was all coming from either the state or from the private provider themselves. From there, we will have some task force input and garner letters of support. We've done, we're very intentional in putting together a broadband task force to make sure we have all those representatives there that can help us make that case and tell that narrative of why it's important. We have. Good adequate broadband here in the community. And then we'll kind of go through the final application process and the, towards the winter time with final submission being done January fifth. And the final grant to be awarded in, in May. So that'd be, this is the main one that will be going, bucket of money we'll be looking to go after here this fall. And then as I alluded to earlier, there's eight hundred and sixty-eight million that's coming to state. So we'll be at the same time kind of preparing, getting our, our ducks in, ducks in a row to make sure we can secure as much of those dollars as well. But that is, I'll hit pause from there and just see if you guys have any questions.
Okay. Questions?
Absolutely. And I know you, I think most of you guys have my contact, if not, feel free to reach out anytime. And if you do here in your constituents or your other work, if anyone kind of asks you about broadband. Please direct them toward Dale's page on the Whitley County Economic Development website. So that's, we created that to be a one-stop shop. So if you guys are hit up about that, please direct them. There's a lot of good resources, whether it's like I said, getting themselves connected or even paying for this, their cost of their service in their home. So with that again, appreciate the opportunity, you guys have a very special day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your work, Teresa Olson. Okay. Next on the agenda is Tiffany, longevity pay. Date letter.
Just like every year, we need to have a letter approved by council so we can give it to person, so they're aware of another distribution.
And that's going to be at the end of the year this year?
Yes, yes, December twenty eighth.
Yeah.
I'd like to motion to approve the request for longevity date of December twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, have a motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tom, that. We paid our longevity on December twenty eighth. Further discussion?
Yeah, my concern is, my question was, maybe you didn't understand, is that I see December twenty eighth, but sometimes our pay periods are off. And that December twenty eighth goes into next year's pay period. So that's not going to happen to where, how it'll affect people.
Their W two's? No, it'll actually get paid out on the twenty-eighth, so that'll.
So it'll be incorporated in their next regular scheduled schedule.
Correct, it's separate, yeah.
That's why I want to make sure.
Sorry.
Okay, any further discussion? Have a motion, all those in favor of, of paying longevity on December twenty eighth, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say. Passes. Courthouse repair. Resolution. Tiffany went ahead and prepared a resolution since it was. In the budget and. So forth. For two hundred and forty thousand for the work courthouse repair, come out of our funds. I have a question to Mark, how solid is that dollar amount?
Solid.
Solid, so that is the true figure?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have any contingencies built into that dollar amount, just in case you get up there and it's worse than you expect? No? That's, and that's fine, I was just, just curious.
I guess that there is a possibility.
But you could always come back and we could appropriate more if we needed. Thank you, that's.
And I think she just prepared this because it was in the budget and maybe get Mark a little heads up on getting scheduled and so forth. So if you have any questions, this is time to ask. What would the ordinance number be?
It would be twenty twenty-three dash fourteen.
Twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. We want to do the resolution today. Your pleasure.
I'd motion to approve the resolution.
Have a motion by Nick. Second by Joan. That we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. Any questions, discussion? Mark, you got anything to say? Yeah, a motion on the floor, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say. Brian, you're up next. Highway additional appropriations you were in last month. This is for treatment on the gravel roads, right?
Correct. Already been done. Just getting the, moving the money over, so money's there to pay our supplier. Figure something else out, maybe take it off the roof. That was that direction of the commissioner for such today.
I'd make a motion to approve the additional preparation request of sixty thousand dollars.
Have a motion from Thor, second by Joan that we approve the eighty thousand request. Further discussion? I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand, all those opposed, say.
Thank you, I know the folks that live on the. Unapproved roads, appreciate it.
I truly do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Brad.
Morning.
Morning.
So this request relates to a drain reconstruction we're doing at one hundred south and three hundred east. It is a reconstruction to facilitate redevelopment. The reconstruction is being funded by Redevelopment Commission. As a part of the reconstruction agreement, they agreed to buy us a piece of equipment to facilitate it. Request is for that piece of equipment, we basically just need, the request is, we're going to pay the bill out of one of our funds. And then have the Redevelopment Commission basically immediately transfer the money into the fund used. That's what this request is for. I think it's about seventy-seven thousand dollars.
It's seventy-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars for the trailer and the.
I didn't, I didn't get it. Any additional questions for Brad or Kim on redevelopment?
It wasn't necessarily the lowest cost one, but it was the one that best fit our needs. And it also comes with, because we're a local government and we're getting this essentially no profit to the provider, the supplier for $2,000 a year, we can get a brand new one every year. Thought that was an advantageous program.
Can you check with local companies as far as?
Okay. Good question. Good comments. Do I have a motion? What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we approve. Go ahead and pay it and then redevelopment will pay it.
Second, a motion by Kim, a second by Tom that we go ahead with the, or approve the purchase of the equipment. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any comments from the public? John?
So as I said last time, I did look into 501(c)(3) for courthouse and museum. Went over, talked to the museum director and the society is already a 501(c)(3), just not building in the ground. So it would be an easy transition for the museum at some point to incorporate that if the county is willing to give the society the buildings and the ground. It would probably be a few years at least before they become self-sufficient, have some campaigns for donorship to build up their funds. So they would require the county funds, but at some point that'd be an easy transition. The difficulty with the courthouse is you'd actually have to give the 501(c)(3) organization the courthouse. You can't rent it or lease it from them without state legislative action. So that could happen, but most likely you'd have to create a board, primarily of commissioners and councilmen so you know that things are done right. And then that they could lease it back to the county for usage. Basically, the 501(c)(3) would have to own the courthouse. Those are the two things I came up with. There are quite a few people out there, spoke with Nick's friend from Fort Wayne and he's very helpful in directing some of that, gave some guidelines. Those things could happen to help lessen taxpayer dollars in the future. It's just we would have to lease codes with the museum on a campaign to get them some dollars that deserve so that they can be self-sufficient at some point. If that's what you want.
When you say self-sufficient, that includes?
Right, exactly. So you could still, the, the historic society could still own the grounds of the buildings and then you could still fund the employees separately if you wanted to. But if you wanted them to all be under the 501(c)(3), including employees, benefits, everything like that, obviously they're going to have some good money in the bank or they can draw some interest on that.
Doesn't change their status as a county employee just on how they'll be compensated, how we compensate them.
Right, you can still, so the county funds can, state funds can be donated to 501(c)(3) groups. So we can give money to that. So even if they became completely, we could still fund them, hopefully less dollars as their funds increase their account. Probably similar to the, like the sewer center. They are eligible to get federal grant dollars. I spoke with the director, kind of pushed him in the direction of using the Miami Indians and it's a couple monies that come from that. They could, they can accept for that, that could be a location, certain location for that. They definitely could get one, a couple monies, but they can't as the county owns, the society can. Displays, things like that, but plays the, the grounds and the buildings can until they're all. Very possible. Thank you. Also just want to thank you for staying behind the health department in the recent state issues. I'm sure that you've seen that we're quite minority when it comes to not to keep federal money or state money. But I hope to be vindicated the state shares that rolls out, see what other counties are headaches they have as that happens. So again, we can agree with that. I, I assume that as that gets rolled out and changes will be made as the state and the locals fight each other on many things because obviously the state has a different mind than the county's often do. So we'll keep, focus on that, keep you informed as that happens. See, so we go from there. We've gotten a small amount of pushback. We've only gotten one letter and one person, just personally, other than that, we don't have any negative comments.
Thank you for the update. Thank you. Okay. Tiffany brought to my attention, Tom, you have a personnel committee report or anything?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Jennifer's not here today, so Joan and Jim can help. I just have three items. The first one was the deputy quarter pay, worth a hundred dollars. And it looks like everybody else in WISK is between 125 and 200. And I think there's like two, two or three deputy quarters and we brought up what we paid them over the years. And one year we pay them 400, the other guy to get 100. They, it wasn't a large dollar amount, they didn't get called a lot. So the personnel committee made a, a motion to extend the pay to 160 per call instead of a hundred. And like I said, WISK and, and the other ones are between 125 and 200. So that was our recommendation.
Tom said there's, and I didn't realize, we had two or three other deputy foreigners that, that make calls and they were getting a hundred dollars a call. And that could be two hours, that could be five hours and so forth. And we, and we looked at that scale and, and one of them had four calls last year, one had one call. So we're not talking a great deal of money, but we thought it should be increased to $160 a call, which is a $60 increase. Joan, you have anything to add to that?
So I guess we'll need a motion to change that, correct?
Yes.
When do you want it to go into effect as well?
Immediately, I'm pretty sure immediately.
Next page.
Yeah, face that one.
Is that a motion, John?
It's a motion.
Do I have a second? Second by Joan. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed to say. Thank you. Okay.
The next thing I had on the agenda, there's a request from Superior Court. And I believe it's under all their employees to include under job requirements and difficulty of work, ability to attend conferences and trainings as required, sometimes out of town and overnight. According to Jennifer, this is not going to change the job description, will not change salary, will not change anything according to her. I think Superior Court wanted that so they were all worded equally in the job description. So that I, I brought to you commissioners while you're here today and the council. I don't know if we've made a motion on that, if we passed that or not, but we were just talking about, did we pass it?
Yes, as well as making sure circuit court.
Yeah. And circuit court is going to go in on it too or not?
That's what you guys.
Yeah. We decided to put them in there. Okay. And like I said, Jen told us it would not change, no reevaluation, no job description, no salary increase or anything. So I guess we were fine with it. I'd like to know what the commissioners think of that.
We just support that decision. We agree that they'll have to be able to.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on that? So we need a motion on that one too?
So you guys have already talked about this as a group.
Yeah, yes. For all three commissioners. Yes, in the last personnel committee meeting that I attended, this is the discussion.
Okay, do, motion to have those amended?
Amended, yeah. Need a motion.
Moved by John. Is there a second? Second by Joan. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed to say. Passes.
And I only have one more thing on the agenda right now is the sheriff wanted to add another deputy. And the last time we talked with the sheriff, he said they were full staffs and we trimmed that down. And the, the only other thing I have, I got an email from Jen yesterday, the commissioners and the three on the personnel committee about, about part-time genders. Do you want to discuss that now or do that after the meeting?
After the meeting.
Okay.
So I think Mark's going to stick around.
Okay. So personnel committee, as far as I know, I have nothing else. We have nothing else.
Great. Thank you. Okay, then you had payroll schedule for 2024. You got county payable schedule. You need to approve those today.
I make a motion to approve both. Payroll and the county accounts payable.
Okay. Motion by Tom, a second by Nick that we approve both the payroll schedule for 2024 and the county payable schedule as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed to say. Thank you. Commissioners report.
The only thing that I can report on is that we're working closely with Scott Baker and Health Department to amend sewer ordinance and change some changes in legislation. So we're consulting, we have many different ones that's related to sewer. Solidating those and we're, we're going to maybe a little bit closer match what the state requires. That's the only thing I have to report, but I'm open to questions.
Still moving along?
Yeah, it's still moving along. I haven't been there in a little while because I've been out of town, but I did notice over the past week that there's a ball, looks like it's really, really personal.
Good, good. Okay. Any questions, Ken?
I, I will say I got to go on a tour last week and I was impressed how they're moving along with it. I mean, they're, they're scooting right through there. They, there's a good update from the engineer or whoever was over there, I don't remember now, but yeah, very interesting couple hours.
Yeah, good, good. Yeah, I can't say enough good things about wide gank construction. They're doing a fantastic job.
I agree.
Okay, thank you very much.
Has there been any expenditures at the contingency funds yet?
Yeah, we've used contingency funds, but that was for the, for soils remediation that we had talked about on it. And then it came up again recently.
How much of that you think is still intact?
We have a number. We've, we've used around 300,000 or, we've used 400,000 or so, 1.2, 1.2 million available in contingency funds.
Appreciate you staying on top of that.
Yeah. Yeah, we're in a good place.
Do they have a estimated date of completion?
They do, but I don't have that in front of me, but I, where's July 31st? There is, it should be. I'm, I'm still on vacation though.
Thanks, Ken.
Great, thank you. Okay, you got minutes of the August 8th meeting and if you'll turn on the back of your minute where it says commissioners received a letter stating they will be receiving 26,000, 1,000, you know, yours says 1,000 something, that should be 26,104.75. Just a little misprint there. Tiffany has corrected her copy or the minutes book copy.
I should approve the minutes as presented with the correction that just.
Okay, is there a second? Second, a motion by Thor, a second by Kim that we approve the August 8th minutes with that slight correction. Okay, I asked for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed to say. Great, thank you. We do have a little personnel meeting afterwards. Go forward. Anything else? Okay.
I have nothing.
I would like to say I went to the Whitley County Community Foundation Open House and I'm really excited for them. I think they're going to really be doing lots of great things in that building. And I believe they have three more open houses yet later this week if anybody can go, go leave that building. It's beautiful and they're doing a good job.
Don't worry, you have anything?
Yeah, I'll just save it for the next week.
Okay. Okay. Nick?
I have nothing.
Tom?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
I have nothing. Okay, meetings adjourned. Please sign the minutes here.
Coming down.